We'll call it being ordered for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2024-18 for August 6, 2024. I'd ask everybody to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. Following the Lord's Prayer, I'd also like to have a moment of silence for Tyron Colbert, Jr., 10-year-old, whose life was taken so tragically last night, if you could, and his family. Thank you.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. In the system of the Lord, in your good and good faith. As we forgive those who trespass against us, and we do not temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A motion from council to approve consent agenda.
It's moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion and corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Consent agenda has been approved. At this time, we have a proclamation to recognize the month of August as Academic Preparation Awareness Month. Ms. Monica Brooks, is Monica here? There she is. There you are. Great, glad to have you. Presenting the NAACP, and it will be presented by Councilman Josh Hastings.
Grandson in the car.
Good for you.
And we have Glendola Stevens, who is Vice Chair of our Education Committee.
Thank you. Good to have you.
Thank you all for being here. So we have a proclamation for Academic Preparation Month. As a dyslexic guy who didn't get the best grades in Maradella, I had to put a lot of time in academic preparation and highly appreciate this. It says, whereas earning a diploma from high school is one of the most cherished things a person can experience in their life and one of the greatest achievements, whereas attending school daily and having the support of parents to achieve this goal is the best approach to reduce the dropout rates in our school system and to show children that they are truly cared about and supported. Whereas encouraging students to remain in school to learn and help students understand the importance of following directions and honoring roles of life skills and mentoring students to learn the value of self-respect and respect for others is essential to their lives. Whereas the clearest path for a student to become a productive and responsible citizen is to support encouragement to stay in school by receiving a high school diploma, the foundation to build a productive life may be realized and students will fulfill their dreams. So we have this signed now. Therefore, the Wycomico County Council proclaims that August 2024 is Academic Preparation Month and encourages all students and parents to inspire our children to be successful students, done this day, 6A of August. And I'd like to invite you all to make a couple comments if you'd like to.
Thank you so much. We thank you so much for this honor. And I'm going to give Glendola the opportunity to speak, but I do want to say that it is our goal to ensure that all children are treated fairly in the schools and have every opportunity to be as successful as possible, as well as be prepared to go straight into employment or academics, however they choose. And we also want to make sure that they're treated fairly, not discriminated against in any way, shape, or form. And we invite you to meet with our State Superintendent, who we have encouraged to come on down, who's coming down to Wycomico on September 17. Glendola.
Good evening. Again, I'm Miss Stevens. I truly want to thank you all on behalf of our NAACP President, Chairperson of Education, Dr. Paula Turner, and the entire Education Committee. We want to thank the council for this proclamation. And I just want to leave a few things with you that we are truly focused on. We're focused on the committee is engaging with the Wycomico County Board of Education's school leadership to determine their plan to attract and to retain teachers and leaders of color and to find out how they were ensure that this group is not mistreated within the system. We're also engaged with the school systems leadership to determine their stance on the bringing restorative schools to our school system. Last, we want, but not least, we want the committee is engaged with the school system leadership to ascertain what they have planned out thus far with the Workforce Investment Board and with Warwick Tech Community College to aid in this area. We also want to know from who from the community has attended these meetings. Again, we thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation to recognize the month of August as Black Philanthropy Month. The Black Experience Community Fund, this is going to be presented by Councilwoman Cory Carter and Sharon Morris. Cory Carter, and we have Sharon Morris here. Good to see you both.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
It gives me great pleasure to give this proclamation to two of my best friends who give me advice when I need it. The proclamation is for the Black Philanthropy Month, whereas Dr. Jacqueline Bouvier-Coplin, a Pan-African Women's Philanthropy Network, and the Wise Fund, Women Invested to Save Earth, established the month of August as Black Philanthropy Month in 2011 with recommendation by the United Nations as part of its 2011 Declaration of the International Decade for People of African Descent. And whereas Black Philanthropy Month is an annual celebration of African descent given in all its forms that include time, talent, treasure, and experience, the month-long observance invites all people, in particular those of African ancestry, to celebrate August and beyond to promote the power of giving, to transform lives that will ultimately sustain Black communities. And whereas Black communities have both historical and traditional vested reasons to celebrate the rich, shared traditions of giving, self-help, and innovation. A legacy of philanthropy merits a concerted effort to spotlight good works, educate future generations, and inspire giving. And whereas the promotion that philanthropy is instrumental to improve social, educational, economic, and health outcomes in Black communities is critical. We land, we love the visionary and co-founders of Black Excellence Community Fund for creating a pathway to celebrate Black Philanthropy Month and to bring its awareness to further our community's nonprofit and charitable interests. Now therefore, be it resolved that all people of Wycomico County are encouraged to appreciate and observe August as Black Philanthropy Month, to celebrate and encourage the cultural richness and philanthropic spirit of our community, and to recognize the vital role generosity plays in ensuring a healthy, safe, and prosperous community in which to live, work, and flourish. Signed by President John Cannon and the Wycomico County Council.
We'll get a picture first, and then feel free to go to the podium and state if you have any comments you'd like to make.
It's just kind of hard to get a window.
I just want to say thank you for the council recognizing Black Philanthropy Month, and especially for the Black Excellence Community Fund. Our visionary founder is Sonia Whitehead. Together with Lori Carter and myself, founded the Black Excellence Community Fund under the umbrella of the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore. And as you heard, our mission and our vision for doing so is preservation and sustainability of our own community, and also to encourage our own community to invest in each other in businesses, education, mentorships, resources, and other needs that we see that we can focus upon. So we thank you for recognizing that.
I just want to say again, thank you so much for the support. We really do appreciate it greatly. Thank you again.
Good evening, Mr. Benson. How are you?
Good evening, my President, Council. We're here tonight for a public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 202407. Mr. Andrew Illuminati from the county attorney's office is here. The bill in 2022, the voters of Maryland legalized possession and use of cannabis for individuals aged 21 years and older. The Maryland General Assembly passed legislation to implement the sale of cannabis in Maryland. And in 2023, the Wycomico County passed legislation to amend the county zoning code to address cannabis sale and use as authorized by the General Assembly. In April 2024, the General Assembly passed the Cannabis License locations Restriction Act, and in that act, they made changes to what was permitted. And the purpose of this bill, 202407, is to modify the Wycomico County zoning code to comply with the new Cannabis License locations Restriction Act. And with that, Mr. Andrew Illuminati is here if the council has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Legislative Bill 202407. Any comments you'd like to make in regard to this specific bill? Come to the podium, state your name, and your county residence, and your concerns. That concludes the hearing on Legislative Bill 202407. Entertained a motion from council to approve Legislative Bill 202407. It's moved. Second? Any discussion for Mr. Illuminati? Mr. Illuminati, you have come forward if you don't mind. We'd appreciate it.
Good evening. Andrew Illuminati, Wycomico County Department of Law. Mr. Benson summarized this legislative bill. Appropriately, it is bringing the county code into compliance with what was passed this last legislative session. So thank the Planning Commission for all their hard work, the Planning Department for their hard work. This became effective June 1, and here it is August 6. And everyone has worked very hard. Council's worked very hard to modify the code and allow the businesses to begin to go through the process.
Any questions? I have one question. Somebody brought it to my attention that they said, how many licenses have been issued from Wycomico County? How many will be issued for Wycomico County?
Those are two separate questions. Two were most recently issued. Whether the state decides to award additional, that's a question for the state based on their metrics for.
Right now, it's two.
Plus the one that already exists, so three total. The ones located in the city of Salisbury.
So including the one that's already in existence, the other two licenses have already been awarded, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that was a question that I was asked. I was concerned. And then they asked another really good question. They said, okay, now, the overview from the state's perspective of total of three licenses for Wycomico, Salisbury is on a completely separate page. Am I correct? They will be issued their own separate licenses. In other words, the three in Wycomico aren't made up of Salisbury's, or is that true or not?
No, that's incorrect. So Salisbury City will have to amend their city zoning code to comply with state law, but the dispensary licenses that were awarded were awarded to the county. The individuals are then free to locate wherever they deem the best location. Free market? Doubt they're going down Ti' Askin, but maybe they will.
Okay, so three is it, period? For some reason, I was mistaken. I thought maybe that there had been a distinction made between what the city might be allowed, separate from what the county might be allowed in their rural district, in their rural areas.
No.
Three is it.
Correct. That's what dispensaries at this time.
Great, thanks. Good to know. Appreciate it. Any other questions?
Just one thing for clarification, and so the public's aware. The current distance is 500 feet from a school, church, place of worship, childcare facility, place of public assembly, and 2,640 feet away from another cannabis dispensary. Is that right?
That is what this is proposed in this legislative bill. It is a reduction in the school from 1,000, what council implemented last year, but that was based on the old law, which was not clear whether or not the local jurisdictions could increase or decrease that state requirement this last legislative term. They stated that it would be unreasonably burdensome to go above, therefore it can go down. However, it is an increase from 1,000 feet to 2,640 feet between cannabis business. So again, assuming, using the current location in the city, assuming the city adopts the same standards where the current location is on Mount Herman Road, about 1,000 feet is where the Burger King is, a half mile is where the Rite Aid is. So that helps put that into perspective.
I'm more concerned about the 500 feet of the pre-existing primary or secondary schools, but there's nothing we can do about it, right?
Unfortunately, there is not. I will say that what the recommendation of the Planning Commission was that the separation requirements indeed have been modified to comport with the criminal prohibition on drug school distribution. So now we're measuring from parcel boundary outward, which will, if you think about where the current location is, how large that Y high property is, it's not just the front step of the school, it's from the outer boundary of where that is. But again, that's in the city, but that's the only one that exists at this time to give people an idea. But as you properly stated correct, you cannot increase that 500 feet.
Seeing none, we'll do roll call. All those in favor of Legislative Bill Number 202407 will say aye. Opposed will say nay. We'll begin with Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Councilman Wynn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shields.
Aye.
Councilman Baker.
Aye.
Vice President Merritt.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Legislative Bill Number 202407 passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, are you?
This is the.
Ms. Hurley. Thank you, Ms. Benson. Ms. Hurley.
All right. Next on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on Resolution Number 91-2024. This is to amend the Wycomico County Water and Sewer Plan for property located on the west side of Brown Road in Salisbury, Maryland. As a summary for the public hearing, the Department of Public Works has received an application from LC Management for the Parsons Lake Single Family Home Development Project, which is located on the west side of Brown Road, and that is to be connected to the public water and sewer supply by the city of Salisbury. This resolution would authorize the county's water and sewer plan to be amended to show that property as served by public sewer and water. And we do have Mr. Brian Wilkins here, engineer with the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 91-2024. If you have any comments you'd like to make in specific to this resolution, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. Okay, concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 91-2024. Mr. Wilkins, good evening. How are you? Thanks for being here.
Good evening. Thank you.
We'll let you have the floor, if you'd like.
Yeah, so this is just a resolution to amend the county water and sewer plan, helpful planning purposes going forward. I believe this project has been in review for a few years, since 2021. Lot of approvals to get by, and so we're finally coming up to this amendment. Require for, because it is S6, W6, and wasn't in the plan, for the plan to be amended to provide public water and sewer from the city of Salisbury.
Okay, any questions? Just Josh.
And just for clarity, of course, this is in the party funding area, right? And then this is not going to be a part of the, the city is not annexing this, correct? Or?
The city is annexed.
They are annexing.
Yeah, this is in the.
They're not just providing, okay, gotcha. That's all right.
I don't know if it's actually annexed at this point. I do have Mr. Hastings with Becker Morgan, maybe help answer some questions.
No relation. Ted Hastings with Becker Morgan Group. This is actually annexed a number of years ago per Resolution Number 1191. And actually, in the annexation agreement, does show water and sewer being extended through this property for, serving this property for residential. And this is also part of the hear-him program in the city of Salisbury.
And just last, it says on their sheet, of course, the population equivalent for the 342 EDU's, population equivalent of 855.
That's correct.
That's really great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all's in favor of Resolution 91-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And next on the agenda is the veto of Legislative Bill 2024-06 and Charter provision for council's reconsideration, which is Section 411D of the Charter. Legislative Bill 2024-06 pertaining to the use of motor sports vehicles on county-owned property was introduced on June 16, 2024. Council then held a public hearing and adopted the bill on July 16, 2024. The legislation was then presented to the county executive on July 16, for which she had 21 days to return the bill to the county council for her approval or veto. The bill was returned to the council office on August 6 with the executive's veto. Per Charter Section 411D, upon veto, the county executive shall provide, in writing, a statement of the reasons for the veto. The veto message shall be entered into the Journal of the County Council, and not later than at its next legislative session day, the county council may reconsider the bill. If upon reconsideration, at least five members of the county council vote in the affirmative, the bill shall become law. A copy of the executive's veto message stating the reason she is vetoing the bill was added to the briefbook this afternoon, and with council's permission, I will enter the veto message into the journal.
Ms. Hurley, is that okay with everybody?
I just want to ask Paula a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Yeah, we'll get into discussion in one second, okay? Entertained a motion from council to reconsider Legislative Bill 2024-06 as originally adopted. It's moved. That's to reconsider. Second? Motion is second. Mr. Benson, would you want to give us an opinion as far as the bill and the veto message?
Be honest, I'm happy to do that, but Ms. Hurley already said exactly what I was going to say.
That's fine.
I don't think you want me to repeat it.
No, no, no. That's perfect. Thank you so much. Discussion, James, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to, is Paula in the room? I thought I saw him back there.
Yes.
Hey, Paul, how you doing?
You call Wilbur County Attorney.
So obviously, we're all trying to achieve some sort of a public process to this, and I know that it says that one of the reasons is overreaching and reactive legislation, but overreaching and interference with executive authority. Now, I can see how that's happening because we need to give approval for it to work on county land, and that's, to me, that sounds like it's overreaching a little. Let me ask you, is there a way that we can modify this? Well, we can't modify it. We have to vote on it, yes or no, tonight.
It's up or down, yes or no.
But I have a feeling that if this passes tonight, that if it goes to court, it could fail, is all. And I just want to try and pass something that will work. Now, I might be the only one with that opinion, and that's okay. But I was just wondering, is it overreaching to require the executive branch to have public hearings on a motorized event and have certain requirements to have that motorized event instead of coming to the council and then having us give approval? Because when, the overreaching part is when it comes to, I feel like when it comes to us giving the approval for the event. And I just, I don't want to appear to have that overreaching. I just, I don't know what your opinion is, or Mr. Benson's opinion is, or Andrew's not in the room anymore, but I don't know if you had any thoughts on that.
What I would say is the legislation that's before the council is within the council's legislative prerogative to do, okay? Certainly, the council wished to pass it. The executive vetoed it, so it's back here for reconsideration.
Right, right. My question is, okay, so we pass this tonight, but the executive branch takes it to court and we lose. I mean, that's a pretty good possibility, I feel, as if because of the peering of it to be overreaching.
Yeah, I can't speak to what the executive intends to do.
Okay.
So if it goes to court, then the judge will speak to it.
Okay, but what I'm trying to ask, and I know it's kind of hard because I'm missing my words a little bit, is there something that we can pass in the future if this doesn't pass to require a public hearing? Is that overreaching?
You could do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would it be overreaching to require, let's just say, if someone wanted to build a neighborhood, they need to reach out into the community and send out letters to the neighbors to say, hey, look, this is going to happen? Can we require the executive branch to notify the public within a certain radius of an event?
That's the type of thing that often occurs in the zoning world. So in terms of requiring notice, yes, that's a possibility.
Okay. That's my question. If this passes and it doesn't go to court, then it worked. But I don't think I'm going to vote on this because I don't think, I think we're going to, I think we'll wind up going to court and I think we'll lose. But if that's the case, then I think maybe there's an opportunity for us to work on something different.
Fair enough. We'll see how the vote goes and see what the executive does. Shane. Mr. Benson, do you have any concerns with this legislation?
No, I mean, the council currently required a one-year, the current language required a contract of more than one year in length to be submitted to the council.
And this contract was for?
Well, the contract was made for 354 days. It caused the controversy. So the alternative the council had was to amend it and say any contract at all has to be submitted to the council, or to choose some different length of time, short of a year, six months, three months, nine months. The council's decision was that they didn't want to have every single contract the county enters into brought to the council, but the concern had to do specifically with motor vehicle events. And so they made an amendment to address motor vehicle events expressly, so that if the county executive enters into an agreement for nine months on a non-motor vehicle event, she's allowed to do that. This simply is related to motor vehicle events only.
If you thought this was overreaching, you would brief the council. I would have told the council I didn't think it was legal.
I think the purpose is just to sort of guarantee stronger representation on behalf of the citizens of the county. You know, it's a public environment here, and if there are concerns with the public, they can bring it to the council, they can air it out, and I think that's what the real purpose is. It has nothing to do with challenging the executive's authority. It's just giving citizens a few more rights and an open forum.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I was saying it would be nice to require a public hearing if we could do that, and then require, hey, why not it be mandatory that it's on PAC 14? That gives people plenty of opportunity to speak their mind on the event. The question is, is, and Mr. Benson's got a different opinion on that, is that when we have the authority to say yes or no to an event that happens in the county, that sounds like it's overreach, because our primary function is legislation and the budget. sounds like it's overreach, because our primary function is legislation and the budget. I don't see how approving events is that. So, that's why I believe that this, this could be modified so that it works for everyone, I just don't think that this is the proper legislation. But it's only, it's just me, so, one vote.
We've not voted yet.
Well, I already know what you're going to do.
I think we wouldn't be here tonight with this legislation if the community was notified and the council was notified before an MOU was decided, and it should have been done prior to the MOU to meet the person who was having the event, so we could ask him questions, share our concerns, have someone from the community or meet with the community so they could hear their concerns, and the folks that was in Shadow Hill would not have to come up here every meeting to express their concerns and concern about safety, noise. So, in other words, if we find, if someone wants to have a car show in front of my house, I feel that the county should have some kind of say because it's in the neighborhood, and the noise would be disturbing. That's not overreaching. We have taxpayers that are concerned about the quality of life and safety, and this, this thing going to court, you mean, if somebody disagrees with the executive, we're going to go to court every time she doesn't get her way? And that's what it looks like to me when you mention that, and so apparently it's been talked about. So, what it's doing when she carries people to court, she's not interested in the taxpayers' wishes, she's just only in her wishes. So, that's all I got to say.
I'm just saying, going to court because you use the three branches of government, so if, if the, if the legislative branch is overreaching, then you go to court, that's why we have three branches of government. You go to court to find out if you are overreaching. That's what happened at the last time we went to court, and we found out we were overreaching, and here we are, we could be doing it again, and it could cost us a lot of money. That is why I am just saying we could modify this and make this work for everyone, but when we go ahead and say, the council has authority to say the county executive can do X, Y, and Z in the county, is that overreaching? Because the executive was elected by the people. Now, I understand that there, there are individuals in the room that have not had a good experience, and that's, that's okay, that's what the ballot box is for. We are not the ones that make that decision because we're, we're elected just as well as the executive is. And I, I mean, you know, that's what the ballot box is for.
You bring up a good point. You said we're legislators and we also approve the budget. Well, part of writing law is protecting the public.
And that's why I'm requiring, that's why I would require public hearings, and that's why I would require a certain amount of radius of people being notified of an event of, let's just say it's a motorized event, and then that's why I require a town hall that would be viewed on PAC 14 for the entire world to see, because if it's a good event, it'll be a good event, and the people will show up and say on PAC 14, I love this, this is a great idea. And if it's not, then, well, I mean, it's, you hang your own noose, you know, if, if you continue to go through it and it's, and you went through all the steps and everyone said no, then there you go. But we don't have that process set up, and I'm just saying that would be the process that I would stand behind to prevent us from having an overreach, because this isn't, we're not a city where there's a mayor and a town council, this is an executive branch where there's, it's like the, the Congress going in and telling the president what to do. You can't do that. That doesn't, it's the same thing, we have an executive form of government, so.
We're not. I don't believe that's what we're doing, I don't.
That is what we're doing, because you have to have council approval to have an event. So, that's.
I think they call it checks and balances.
Well, that's what.
James, only on county property, this has nothing to do, nothing to do with private property.
So, this is, this is my viewpoint, obviously, this is what I believe. I, I just want to, in my fair view of checks and balances, I laid out what I believe is fair, and I, and I know it might upset a few people in the room, and I get that, but I, if we go to court, which I'm sure we will, and I think we'll lose, then we'll be back at the drawing board to go over what I'm talking about.
Unfortunately, with court, sometimes you win and sometimes you lose.
And if we win, then we win, that's fine. I'm just laying out my game plan, and, and I'm okay if we win or lose. I just, I just want it to work out without having a lot of headache.
I think it's a better use of time and money for everybody in Wacomico County than to take every legislative bill to court.
James?
But you're not a lawyer, nor am I.
Nor am I.
We've been briefed by our council.
Any other discussion? I'm going to be very clear here.
Okay.
If I could, for the council, we need to, we're going to be needing to vote twice. The first vote is going to be for the reconsideration of the bill, which we already have a motion to second. Then we'll need a second motion to actually approve the bill as adopted, okay? So, this will be a vote to continue with the reconsideration of legislative bill 2024-06 as originally adopted. Joe, it's just to reconsider?
Yes.
Josh, James?
I guess I'd vote no for that.
Okay. Shaney? Shane?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, so that's 6-1. Motion to reconsider legislative bill 2024-06. Now, we will take a, a vote to, to approve legislative bill 2024-06 as originally adopted. That'll be a real call as well. Shaney?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
James?
So, this is the same thing? No.
Okay. Chair votes aye. Legislative bill 2024 as originally adopted has been approved by a vote of 6-1. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name. Thank you, Mr. Wilber.
Yeah.
Come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Keep in mind, we do have a three-minute limit.
Good evening, council, and I feel very safe. Four sheriffs from four different counties and a few deputies. It's always good to see them come out and support our sheriff here in Wacomico County. Thank you, Sheriff Lewis. I want to thank the council, each and every one of you, for everything that you have done. Oh, by the way, I'm Holly Ortel, the president of the Vicomico County Firefighters Association.
Thank you.
I want to thank each and every one of you for what you have done by being in contact with our state senator, Ben Carden, on the 1099 for the real tax credit, the real estate tax credit for we firefighters. I'm kind of disturbed, I got ahold of our county executive, and I don't want to throw anyone under the bus, I want to work with everyone. But when I ask, hey, have you gotten what you were looking for from the IRS? I was informed that it's Ms. Laura Hurley's responsibility. No, it's not Laura. It's Ms. Pam Olin's responsibility. That's her job, she's the finance director. We as firefighters, volunteers that are the backbone of this county are being played with, and we're done. We are done. So, all I want to do is thank you guys, you have been very, very supportive of us with everything, and on behalf of the association, thank you. Also, we have the Wacomico County Fair coming up, August 16th, 17th, and 18th, and I would love to see everyone out there. And thank you, council, for the ones that can come to our fire association meetings, it's always wonderful to have you all, and hopefully, Ms. Shaney and James and Josh, hopefully you'll come back in, I think our next meeting's in Hebron.
It's good food.
Yep.
It's always good food. Thank you, President Ortel. Any other public comments?
I'd like to comment on the other issue, but I've run out of time. So, tonight, my name is Miguel Dallin, and I live in Wacomico County. I'm here to address our county's recent memorandum of understanding, MOU with Eastern Shore, ESU, regarding encrypted law enforcement channels. Our county executive states this is a cost-free solution to meet PIA requirements of transparency. However, I'm left with many questions and concerns. I know this council is about to have an open work session with the sheriff on this subject, so I'd like to share these with you for consideration. First, to address the practicality of this MOU, ESU as a small business does not provide continuous coverage. It generally provides coverage between the hours of 7:00 to 10:00, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, although it takes off large chunks of time during these hours to attend meetings, make podcasts, sometimes taking off entire weekends. These things are reasonable for a small businessman to do, but he is clearly not able to provide all calls for service from the encrypted channels. Are the calls that come in during the substantial gaps in coverage not subject to the PIA requirements that brought about the need for the MOU? Can we truly rely on a system that only sporadically captures emergency calls? The MOU states that ESU is obligated to publish accurate police radio dispatch transmission data on social media platforms adhering to PIA requirements. How can this system be considered as an alternative to a system such as Broadcastify, which would cover every single call? Second, the issue of equity of access is paramount. The owner of ESU has made it clear that he has the right to moderate comments and ban people at will. This is his right as a private page, but how does this interplay with him being a contractor for the county with the obligation of disseminating information required to be made public by laws governing PIA? When this page becomes the primary source of public information, concern arises about equal access to all residents, especially those banned for deferring opinions or those without social media. Is it fair to entrust such a critical public service to a private entity with the power to control access? I know what it's like to be banned from ESU for a difference of opinion. I was banned for speaking about the increased incidence of dangerous trespassing after advertisements for Safari at the Quarry commenced. I experienced times when I did not want to call in these dangerous incidents because ESU was posting our calls with commentary inciting negative feelings and hostility towards our neighborhood. I had the chance to, a few weeks ago, to sit down with Earl and talk about these issues. I explained to him how these posts deterred us from reaching out for police assistance. He assured me that this wouldn't happen again, and I hope that that remains true. As a result of our conversations, he lifted my ban and restored my access to ESU. Still, I'm left wondering about the many others who have been banned. Should such denial of access be at the discretion of a single individual, especially when county granted access to public information is at stake? In short, I believe we must prioritize completeness of reporting, transparency, and most importantly, equity of access while looking for a solution that truly serves the best interests of all Wacomico residents. Thank you, and thank you for your vote.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor.
Hi, everybody. Give me a minute to get myself together. I was here 39 years ago when I wanted to build a home on Tower Hill Lane. I was told the first two times that I wouldn't be able to do it, and I told my kids, I said, three is a charm, I said, I'm gonna get it this time. They said, Mom, don't go intimidating people. I said, I got to do what I got to do, but anyway, first two times, as I said, they told me no. The third time, I said, can anybody tell me why Jervetigo has three down there? Why am I at the wrong end? I need to put my house down this end and not this end. So, I got it. So, if any of you guys were there, thank you. My friend here made me aware of what was going on in San Domingo. She said, it's a Mexican on Old School Road that have seven cars in his backyard with no tags. Well, come find out, he was an expando, not a Mexican, but anyway, she said, you need to ride in this neighborhood to see what's going on. I said, what do y'all need to do about it, not just talk about it? So, I did. There are Mexicans that has trailers coming from the building, lights coming all around, it's a mess. It's really a mess, and nobody's doing anything about it. And let me not forget the church that migrate, are living there now. It's sad. I did speak to someone two weeks ago on the second floor, and he ensured me that things would be taken care of. Not yet. Not yet. My grandfather once owned 70 acres in San Domingo, and I live next to the oldest house in the community. It's 100 years old, and it was never, never the way it is now. And it's sad. It's sad. One guy moved down from me and he had all these cars, and I told him, I said, if you don't move these cars, I said, I'm gonna tell it on you. He said, why tell it? When I saw him moving, I said, I told you I was gonna tell it on you, didn't I? But I'm just saying, you know, you just, we just have to do something about it, and it's sad. It's sad to let a place go that you were born and raised in. It really is. Who's, oh, amen, amen. So, I'm just here letting everybody know if you have some insight on what I need to do and how to do it. I have a lot of mouth, and I told my, I know you know me, I told my friend a few minutes ago, I thought she was coming up here with me, I said, if I start talking too long, I said, tap me on the arm, and she said, she said, that's not gonna do you any good. I said, well, hit me then. So, anyway, that's all I have to say, but please help, help me to help them to fix San Domingo up the way it used to be.
Thank you. I don't, I don't think we got, did we get your name? I'm sorry.
You're gonna tell them your names?
Oh, probably not, my son, my son's a cop, but I'm a, my name is Clementine Brown Clark.
Thank you.
I came up with all these guys, and they thought I was scared, but I wasn't scared.
Clementine.
Hi, my name is Bernadette Kennedy. I'm also a resident of the community of San Domingo, and I'm also here tonight to express concerns on the migrant camp that seems to be operating on Elze Brown Loop. And my concerns for the community are sanitary conditions and health conditions, and I really think the county needs to look into it, because we all know what happens, I think 2020 taught us what happens when disease goes unchecked, and it could spread to not just from, in San Domingo, but it could spread elsewhere. So, you know, and it's also concern about the workers. You know, I'm also concerned about the workers and the people who are employing them and allowing them to live in such conditions. So, I think it needs to be looked into. Also, in San Domingo, and my research is not complete on this one, but I'm, I have been told that there is possibly a halfway house or a transitional home being operated or maybe soon to be operated on Cooper Mill Road. Also, you know, I, I have a hard time figuring out when permits have been issued for this kind of operation, but again, the same, I have the same concern, sanitary conditions, health concerns, and also safety concerns for the community and also for the people who they're supposedly supposed to be helping, and it not just being a money grab, where, you know, the, the houses are opened up and people just living there. So, there's two concerns that I think the county really needs to look into, or should there be a public hearing done before this type of housing, a transitional home is open in, in, in any community? That's the question. Also, on Cooper Mill, no, it's on San Domingo Road, during the last administration under the late Culver, on San Domingo Road, right at the corner of Elze Brown Loop and right before you get to Quentin Road, there was the site of Cooper Mill Elementary School. Now, the last administration stated that there was supposed to be a marker placed there, and I was also told that the grass would be cut, but that we're waiting for the seedlings to grow? Well, it's, I think that property is now owned by the county, and it is now a wilderness. Nothing has been cut, I mean, whatever was planted there has grown, so you can see to cut the grass, and I really want to resurrect that project of having that marker placed there for Cooper Mill Elementary School, because it was promised to us from the last administration, and I think it needs to be done, because it is a historical, it was a historical figure for the black community. Okay?
What was your name, ma'am?
My name is Bernadette Kennedy.
And can we, can I, how can I get your information?
I have it.
You have her information? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. think it needs to be done because it is a historical, it was a historical figure for the black community. Okay?
What was your name, ma'am?
My name is Bernadette Kennedy.
And can we, can I, how can I get your information?
I have it.
You have her information? Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Evan Avnet. I appreciate your consideration of my opinion about the encryption of county sheriff's office communications. I own a licensed private detective and security agency in the county, as well as security consulting firm and special police training academy. I served as a law enforcement officer both with the city police and Wycomico County Sheriff's Office. First, I want to state that I agree with what I believe is the law enforcement point of view in encrypting law enforcement communication to the public. Attacks on police officers are increasing nationwide. Allowing the general public unfettered access to law enforcement communications is dangerous. Criminals and the public have become more adept in invading law enforcement efforts. It's easy for criminals to listen to a scanner and know when law enforcement is responding, creating a hazardous situation both for officers and allowing criminals to escape arrest. Secondly, I'm concerned that a private blog can profit from listening to and transcribing police calls while other businesses and citizens cannot. I own a licensed private security agency, and it would be extremely beneficial for me to be able to hear police calls for the safety of my security officers. For example, there's an armed robbery on one of our properties, and our security officers unaware of it, it could put them in danger. Nevertheless, it's perplexing that a blog can obtain an agreement to listen to police calls when other businesses and citizens cannot. It poses a risk to officer safety and gives one business and a county inclusive access to police calls for profit. I don't have an issue with the blog specifically or the owner. I'm just concerned of the safety of deputies and the unequal access to police calls. Some argue that the public should be allowed to listen to police calls for their safety and monitor police activities. However, in today's climate, I believe the risk to officer safety outweighs the public's entertainment or slim prospect of them listening to an incident in their area. I think it's a matter of all or nothing. Either you allow all citizens to listen to police calls or don't allow them at all. For the sake of officer safety, which is much more crucial to public entertainment, I hope you don't allow it. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. For the most part, I guess most of y'all know who I am. My name is David James, and I am from Wycomico County. And first, the young ladies that are from San Domingo, I'm from Weetiflin, Maryland. And we have, also have a school down there, which Councilwoman Shields and I have been working with, and that also needs to be taken care of. So I understand. The halfway houses that came down there, they've already been on our way. Recovery 180 is the name, so we need to talk. Back over here, hello, everyone. Praise the Lord, I'm just glad to be alive. Sheriff Lewis, good to see you. I want to talk about something positive, and then I want to talk about a negative. Positive is, there was a prayer vigil out at the city park for an attempted assassination of one of our presidents, whether you're red or blue. He was a president. Thank you, President Cannon. Thank you, Councilman Merritt, for being there. I really appreciate that, and you said some kind words. I wish we can work together more like that. Now, I want to talk about something else. Councilman Winn, I was with you last weekend, and we was over in the Church Street area, and somebody walked up to you and showed you appreciation for a generous donation to an organization, and I think that was admirable. All that good stuff is good. I got a little bit of a situation, though. Whether you're red or blue, okay, I am a black Republican. I don't know if that offends anybody, but I know Martin Luther King was. My concern is, I was out to Third Friday, and while I was out to Third Friday, there was pictures taken because I was working the Republican headquarters. And I had a problem because the question that y'all have to get rid of the county executive, the whole tent was put up in front of the Republican headquarters. Now, granted, I understand, they got it when the city says that they can do it, they can do it. Pretty sure Mayor Taylor wouldn't have said that. But then there was pictures sent with my name on it. I'm not gonna say who it is because you know who you're guarding. Listen, I'm a minister. I do Bible studies with Council Lady Shields. I may be red, she's blue. I love her. I loved her for a long time. I don't care what color skin, color you are, anything like that. We need to remember who we serve, and that's the people. Okay? I was out there to meet people. I was out there to show my support for what I believe in, whether it's blue or red, whether it's Trump or whatever. If you are an elected official, do me a favor. Spell my name right if you're gonna send out texts, but leave the public out of your garbage. Seriously. I thank the county executive also, whether you like her or not. I'm from Weetiflin. We've gotten overlooked for over 10-plus years, and since she's been in office, she made promises to that county, that area. Sheriff Lewis, you were at that town hall meeting at the firehouse. She made promises down there. We now have a council down there, not a council like y'all, but a little committee to get things taken care of. Their roads are getting taken care of. There's things happening. Look, whether it's Julie or somebody else, we need an executive because with just a council, those roads did not get taken care of since my late uncle was on one of the councils. Oh, time's up. God bless. Have a great one.
Thank you, Dave.
Mike Goldberg, Wycomico County. I'm not gonna get in anything too deep tonight, but if you're interested in learning more about the wide range of issues that Wycomico County residents are facing, then tune into Open Agenda on Public Access Television PAC 14. You'll be able to hear insightful political discussion and analysis where guests of different parties and political perspectives get to have their say without personal attacks, slanderous statements, and the vitriol that you see on certain other PAC 14 programs. You'll also learn about Wycomico County's many parks, recreational areas, and historical sites on Open Agenda. For more information on the Question A referendum, visit Yes on Wycomico, I'm sorry, Yes on Wycomico Charter Amendment on Facebook. And remember, it's everybody's civic duty to vote, but it is likewise your duty to seek out the facts before casting your vote. I am confident that informed citizens will vote for the Question A charter amendment so that transparency, accountability, and competence may once again return to the Wycomico County government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Holly Campbell, citizen of Wycomico County and resident of Shadow Hills. I want to thank the council for the legislation on the motor vehicle events. I'm gonna take a couple of my seconds to play you a video, and it's short. This was from May the 4th, the night before, so about quarter of 1:00 AM. Let me turn up my volume. That's my waterfall. You hear first in my backyard, but I was working at my laptop.
It's like 12:50.
Sorry. Excuse this. I was a little irritated at the time, but, um, let me hear this. Okay, that went on for about two hours before I got up from my seat to go outside. I live next door to McKell. That was literally on the wood line, you know. This was the night before, the first day of the Safari at the Quarry event, which we had, I feel like politely protested taking place. We appreciate you passing legislation. We felt it was necessary. Mr. Winn, I respect your opinion. I think in terms of overreach, which was, I think, a big part of your conversation today, the charter allows the council, actually provides the council, overreach, I'm sorry, oversight to leases of county land that are over one year. So this agreement was done for 364 days. It's a two-day difference, right? So if you believe that it's overreach, then isn't it overreach if it's over a year? I mean, is two days really enough to discern that something's overreaching or not overreaching? Because you do have that oversight on anything over a year. So it's clearly structured to get around that. So I feel like the overreach in this example is really on the executive side of this, and we appreciate you passing legislation. On the Public Information Act conversation that's coming up, I'm a realtor. I have to submit FOIA requests regularly to get septic and well records, which are really essential to selling somebody's house. It's always urgent. You know, we have to request that, and then we have to wait for it. And I read the Public Information Act, at least parts of it, that are really important. And I did read in there some pretty important clause that, under a law passed in '21 and effective in '22, the custodians must adopt a policy of proactive disclosure of public records that are available for inspection. The policy may vary as appropriate to the type of public record and to reflect staff and budgetary resources, and may also, but is not required to include publication of public records on a website. Okay? Our records, when we need them, they're not published on a website. I can't get them easily. I have to ask, and I have to wait. Okay? So if we're gonna say this has to be done, the executive exclusive the other day said this was being done because we have to comply with the PIA. I just would challenge to prove that in the PIA, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is James Doleen. I live in Wycomico County. I have several unorganized thoughts that are coming through my head, especially after Councilmember Winn spoke about this legislation for motorsports. And like Holly said, your main point was this overreach. And I mean, to talk about that with the executive, the cease and desist sent for violating the residential zoning code for that property, she ignored that. I'm not sure why. Overreach and violate zoning because you can? I think that's pretty egregious. Let's see, what else was overreach on this? The advice from the NRCAC was not taken for appropriate use of the land. You know, that committee is there to advise the council and executive, I believe, and appointed by the executive even, I think. So that's ignored. Several other environmental groups, Wycomico Environmental Trust, Sierra Club, you know, petition with over 8,000 people supporting, you know, taking care of that land appropriately. I'm sure I'm forgetting some, but it seems like that was huge overreach. I guess the council formally sent her, the executive, a letter saying, "Hey, you're violating all these things." She continues on, "That's overreach." I'm not sure who's on her side saying, "Oh, yeah, go ahead with this." Surely wasn't the county. So I think that's all on that topic, and I'd switch gears to this upcoming open work session, the MOU with Eastern Shore Undercover. And I'm glad you all are taking it upon the council to, you know, talk about this. I think it's concerning. I think it's interesting. One thought that I've thought about is, you know, why should everyone need to hear all these radio calls, you know, so immediately? I'd really love to hear if I hear all the calls and stuff going on in your all offices. I mean, I'd love to be able to see a website that lists all that as they're happening. I think that'd be kind of cool. I'm not sure why the, if there's some reason why the emergency calls need to be published so quickly, and maybe there's a reason. I don't know. I'm curious. So thank you.
Any other public comments?
Hello, my name is Randy Reeser from Wycomico County, Parsonsburg. Me and my wife, we bought a property. You all know, the council members know, we bought a property. We're homeless. We're trying to build a home on this property that had a house on it. Needless to say, we're battling that. I did send a text out about a month ago to an individual about trying to find out who is in charge of Chapter 225 of planning and zoning. And I've been led around here, there, there, here, and I'm trying to find out who it is. The text message back to me was the Planning Commission. Who is the Planning Commission? Don't know. I can't find out no names. I go to the executor's office. I've been all over this county trying to find out who are the individuals that monitor Chapter 225 to remove and add regulations to that.
Your property's in Parsonsburg?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You and I spoke, I think, at the SUC.
I spoke to you, Mr. Cannon, Holloway, Winn. I've been all over the board, and this is getting ridiculous anymore. Then we got a letter about removing campers and all this stuff. So I'm just trying to find out who's in charge. Is it an elected official? Is it just a group of people? Who is in charge of planning and zoning regulations?
Are you staying for the whole meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll talk to you after, if that's all right.
Okay, yeah. Another issue, about two months ago, we all received notices, there's a burn ban in Wycomico County because of how dry it is. A lot of us individuals enjoy campfires, bonfires, just burning, sitting in our backyards. Where's the notification that the burn ban was lifted? It went public big time when it was in about. Where was the communication of, "Hey, the burn ban's lifted after the rain fell"? No communication there, but stopped burning. So now we're in limbo of where are we at? There's no communication. I'm just trying to find out why we get the things notified to us, things that we cannot do, but we don't get the response back of things that we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Monica Brooks, resident of Wycomico County NAACP and a resident of Wycomico County. I did speak at the special session meeting about my objections, our objections to the MOU, but I just wanted to reiterate that our concerns regarding transparency, which we have not seen in this county, privacy, which we're concerned about whether that will be affected, and the idea that we should just take people's word for it. And I still also am concerned about how information is being disseminated, how people can find out and get opportunities to do business with the county in whatever capacity so that everyone has an opportunity to have access to certain bids if things are put out to bid, or what is put out to bid here? You know, that's the question. For myself, as a construction person, I have to bid. Every government job that goes out has to be put out to bid, and then we bid on it. And I've seen, you know, big construction projects being bid on, and I know there's procurement things that are being bid on, but there's a lot of stuff that seems like that's not being bid on. So I'd very much like to know how that's determined as well so that people, you know, know. Because at the end of the day, if we're talking about transparency, then we need to be fully transparent. It's very hard to find information. And sir who said about looking for the Planning Commission, it's hard to find out who's on a bunch of these commissions. I go on the website, I'm talking about, I literally had to ask even for the new commissioner and women. I said, "Who's on it? And how'd they get on there? And who picks them?" You know, now I know who picks them now, but all of the commissions are, the information is not being updated. We don't know who's and when the meetings are for some of these ones that are supposed to be accessible to the public. We don't know when those are. And then, let me go to the Police Accountability Board. Let me get on that one. People were put on that board, and they're supposed to have one- and two-year terms. Will these terms keep getting just re-upped without? No, I haven't seen any new people getting an opportunity, except for people that just left. But I don't think you should just keep re-upping people without giving other people an opportunity to be on these commissions as well, and not to mention the fact that that commission is not transparent either. And it takes so long to get information from them. So I think a lot of these commissions, quite frankly, really need some oversight so that we can really have what we keep all talking about, real transparency throughout the entire process of the county, as well as the process through the commissions. Thank you.
That concludes public comments. I need to read an adjournment statement if I could. Entertaining motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into Entertaining motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session. Hang on one second, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I knew I was getting ahead of myself. Counsel comments. You all very polite. Counsel comments first.
You saw my mic. Go ahead, Josh. Okay, let me, I want to talk about the migrant. Many years ago, when I first moved back home, I worked with the late James Leonard. And one of the projects, he was appointed to the Governor's Task Force on Migrant Housing. And one of the things that we did was to eliminate migrant camps. You had Butler Luther's camp, you had Richardson's camp, you had camps seem like everywhere, and he was advocating for better housing for migrants, not stockpiling them. Now, what they're basically doing now, because I did it in my neighborhood, in Seventh Day Adventist Church, and I raised cane about it, see all these buses lined up, and the migrants hanging out, clothes throwed over the thing, they had a high fence. So I called Tony at the Code Enforcement Officer and explained that I didn't want it in the neighborhood. So it went on, and I found out the Department of Agriculture is paying the property owner. So this year, I jumped ahead of them. And I rent by the house, I saw all these mattresses in the U-Haul. And I told, called Lori Carter, I said, this is unacceptable, they're going to be laying these men on the floor. And I know, I'm familiar with the church, because it was the original Seventh Day Adventist Church, they don't have a bathroom to sink, they may have women, men's bathroom, but it was not for all those people. So what they did, I got a call, I got, no, I got a rumor that they were having, moving it down to San Domingo. So I didn't want to get lost, so I went down there. And I was looking for a white, you know, a church color white. So then we finally found this church, beautiful church, beautiful church. So we didn't see anything, and all of a sudden I heard that they moved the men from Seventh Day Adventist Church to down to San Domingo. So I rode down San Domingo again, and I saw what I saw. It's not right. So one of your community members called me, and I'm happy to see all of you, because I said, come to the meeting and voice your concern because you live there. My concern is, why don't the farmers provide housing like they used to do in Ocean City? Why does it have to be in the black community? Why all negative stuff have to be in the black community? We don't know any, we don't know who they are, don't know what the background, you never would notice, notified, and same owner, I believe, that had bought Seventh Day Adventist Church, he probably charges by the head. So something needs to be done. It's not right to take a beautiful building, they got chandeliers in there, I said, oh Lord, and people might think they're in the Waldorf Astoria, look with chandeliers, but I'm just saying it's not right to house a group of men, and it's got to be like 20 or 30 men in that, in that church, it's got to be, because of a lot at Seventh Day Adventist. And they found it was unsafe, unsanitary, and just like the lady said, COVID and those kind of things, you got to think about that. Now, the second thing, we talked about the young, President Cannon mentioned a young boy that was shot the other evening. We also had a little girl that got killed in an auto accident. And the sad thing about, I guess I got good nerves, I knew both families. It's very sad, because I've been through this when somebody dies suddenly. And the mother of the little girl just finished her RN. And it's so sad, it's just sad, it's a sad time. And it's no time to do things mean, evil, revengeful. Now, everybody accuses us here not working together. We can't work together when we get things a Friday afternoon. And I think if it's, if it's a blessed project, it would've been done right in the first place. When you do things in the background and secretive, it's not going to be blessed. Now, if you're that mean, and I'm saying it, if you're that mean to take us to court because we disagree with you, because you don't get your way, and you have supporters to think we're not getting along, this executive does not want to get along, and I would tell her, if she was woman enough, as I said before, if she was woman enough to take the disagreement with her or criticism, I'm woman enough to take criticism. I think I'm right all the time, but I'm willing to take criticism. But I'm just saying, she should have been woman enough to take the criticism and accepted the veto and move on to another issue, just like the migrant issue. She, there was the property accountability board, we ain't having nothing but no accountability board, I don't even know who they are. See, that's the kind of stuff she should be working on, not this vengeful stuff tit for tat, and she's doing the tit and we're not doing the tat, she's doing both. So that's all I got to say tonight.
Can I talk now? Not got your permission. So my wife and I went on a cruise, well, my wife, my parents, my family went on a cruise last week. Our first port of call was Florida. So I turned my phone back off airplane mode, and it gotten several calls, need to check the executive exclusive, there's some things on there you're going to want to see. Well, the executive mentioned several times during her executive exclusive that there was a couple county councilmen and women that weren't in attendance last week. Well, I was on a cruise that I'd already spent thousands of dollars on six months ago to go on vacation with my family. So I felt the need to defend myself and other council people. You know, I asked Mrs. Hurley yesterday, I said, can you pull my attendance record? I said, I want to see how many days I've missed as a councilman since elected. I haven't missed a day. Now, we have emergency sessions that come up, and I've missed four. One of them, I was on a cruise. The other one, although my employer is phenomenal and helps me get off and works with me so that I can do this job as well, I don't take advantage of that. So if we're busy at work, and it's something I think that I can balance out and maybe not attend that council meeting, it's an emergency meeting, sometimes I don't. One of the other meetings, I was on a transport to DC. So yes, I have missed four emergency meetings in the two, two and a half years, whatever we are now. I've missed no council meetings regularly scheduled, and when we take vacation, I always try to plan it so that I'm not out of town during a meeting. So part of those texts and phone calls while we were in port of call in Florida was this whole MOU with Eastern Shore Undercover. I've been in law enforcement for 20, 25, 26 years, since 1999. I, I cannot believe that our county executive thought it was appropriate to give an encrypted radio to a citizen. No offense to citizens, but we go through a lot of background checks, lie detector tests, training, so on and so forth. You know, that's a big deal to have a police radio at your beck and call that you can transmit and receive. This isn't about Mr. Campbell and Eastern Shore Undercover. I would have a problem with this with anyone if I found out they were given a police radio. I don't agree with it, I think it's way wrong. We're going to talk about it tonight, obviously, but I'm still appalled by it, just can't believe that that's been done. So I guess it's your turn.
My turn? I don't know how I follow that. Well, great to see everybody tonight, always good to see a lot of people out here. I do want to give a shout out to the gentleman sitting over here, as one of them yawns. I'm pretty sure each one of you guys put that uniform on before the sun came up today like you do every day, and here we are 14 hours later, and here you sit. And you do this every day. You have my utmost respect. That's all I'll say. This National Night Out, I do want to give a shout out to all of the communities that have put together these community events, especially for our young people. Our young people in today's society need all the help we can give them. And so a shout out to Delmar did theirs on Friday, I think Pittsville looks like it's canceled tomorrow because of storms coming in, but Fruitland and Salisbury tonight, shout out to the teams that put all that together. Motor vehicle legislation, you know, we keep hearing about overreach and, you know, that's great, don't agree with it. We did this in an effort to protect a community that was not involved in the discussion, that's been well established. I don't care if that community was Shadow Hills, Nissdale, somebody out in Willards, it doesn't really matter. We will do this to protect any community in this county, doesn't matter who it is. The encryption process, that's going to be discussed at length here soon. That's just another example of not all the stakeholders being involved in the discussion before a decision was made, it's that simple. We continue to hear the divisive rhetoric that's being generated. A lot of it is on social media. Not only is this unproductive, but when it comes from those in leadership positions, it is unprofessional to say the least. Laura, can you please put that slide up? So you might or might not be able to read that. Ladies and gentlemen, that is a Facebook post that was posted by our county executive on her personal Facebook page, not the county Facebook page. So personal Facebook page, you have the right to do whatever you want, say whatever you want to say. This shows a couple of pictures at the bottom of a controversial Olympic women's boxing event, along with the following quote, the type's a little small, you might not be able to read that, I'm over 60 years old, I can't read anything two feet past my face. "The same people who think this is okay for a man to literally punch a woman in the face are the same people who want to eliminate the executive office, they just throw their metaphorical punches in the council chambers," end quote. Not only does this accuse the members of this council that voted in favor of the referendum in November, one of whom was a woman that voted in favor of it, it implies the same for members of the public as well. This post is one of the most disgusting things I've ever seen on social media, and I've been on social media for, I don't know, 10, 15 years. I hope the excuse is not, I was exercising my right to free speech. Just because you have the right to say something doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. This is not an isolated incident, and it is definitely not a representation of a leader. And again, just because you have the right to do something doesn't make it the right thing to do. I did an interview the other day, and one of the questions I was asked, I've been asked many times over the past 18 months, why can't the council get along with the executive? My response 18 months ago was different than the one I gave the other day. 18 months ago, I said, maybe we should ask why the executive can't get along with the council. My response the other day was, in the last several months, I've changed my position. There's three reasons why we can't get along: lack of trust, lack of respect, and lack of communication. Now, one of those can be easily fixed, communication. Change your protocol, change how you do things, that can be fixed very quickly. Trust and respect are built over time as relationships are formed, and they can be lost in an instant, in one instant, they can be lost. As we entered the last 90 days before the election in November, I encourage everybody, and I've said this multiple times before, check your facts. Do not believe everything that you see on social media. Put your opinions and personalities to the side and ask the simple question about this ballot question, has it worked the way it was intended? I think we know the answer. I will be voting yes on question A in November. Mr. President, that's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Good evening, thanks everyone for being here tonight. I had a guest come in tonight that wanted to comment on some of the posts on Eastern Shore Undercover, but unfortunately, she's under the weather. It seems that administrator of that blog site or whatever allowed some pretty unsavory comments about my wife and my deceased mother. Can you imagine that? But anyway, I'm going to, she's going to be feeling better in two weeks, she's home with a hot towel on her head and some Vic stuck up her nose, I think, since she's feeling bad, but hopefully next two weeks from now, she'll be here. And I'll let her comment on that, because she's very upset about that. I am too, but these folks have covered it pretty good tonight, so I'll slack off on that one. But I want to address this thing about, well, two children were killed yesterday in our neighbor, in our community. I guess the drive-by shooting, I really don't know what to do about that or say anything, it's so sad. The one it was that died out on Route 50, it's probably been 10 or 12 years ago. Every year, we have a meeting with the state highway administration, and it's probably 10 or 12 years ago, we were at one of those meetings, and I brought up that portion of highway, the Hobbs Road, where the bypass comes in and all that, and one of the state engineers, you know, I said, look, something really needs to be done with this portion of the road. I don't know what the answer is, I'm not an engineer. But I live on that side of town, and I hear a lot that what goes on over there and between, I guess you would say where the old K-Mart was, Tillman Road and Hobbs Road, is a very, very dangerous area. I don't know if the speed limit needs to be lowered, there needs to be reconfiguration, the lights need to be changed, things need to be done. We will be meeting with the state highway in the near future. Possibly we'll get letters together before then. I had close friends of mine's son get killed right, well, right there where you cross over to get on 50 or on the bypass a few years ago. So I think that's something that the, it's not something that's under the council's umbrella for us to take care of, but I think we can surely address it and try to get some action done from the state on it. So that's all I had, Mr. Cannon.
Comments?
Yes, Josh?
I won't pile on anymore, but I did, of course, want to echo Mr. Holloway's concerns and thoughts there, you know, especially on the travel, you know, that part of Route 50 is quite dangerous, that is where my twin sister and my mother live in that community, and it is, we really do need to do something, and I also don't know what to do, but it needs to be addressed. Also needing to be addressed, you know, gun violence, what it can, you know, this is a continued issue that is really, you know, plagues the United States as a whole, but, you know, in Maryland, anywhere in this country, that is an issue, and we all need to be much more, you know, we continue to see the same results and the same things happen, you know, by comparison, by the way, there's about four people die every year in Japan from gun violence. Tokyo is four times the size of New York City. So there are countries, there are places in the world where they do a better job at handling things, I think we can continue to be thoughtful about that, and I'll follow behind our law enforcement community and others who are trying to find ways to address that. And last things I'll say, I'm constantly reminded by folks that only, only old people are on Facebook. Well, as an elder millennial, who is on Facebook? If anyone does want to find out more information, I do try to update mine, facebook.com/hastingsforwycomico. Trying to always bring out more information for the public, bring more voices. I'm going to do a better job of that, but I do think we all need to be thoughtful as we don't, you know, the media environment is not like what it was, you know, even 10 years ago or 15 years ago. So we do need to be more thoughtful on our communications and our approach, so, all in there. Thank you.
You'll get old someday.
I'm old already.
Under presidential comments, I'd like to thank Sheriff Lewis. Under presidential comments, I'd like to thank Sheriff Lewis and his distinguished guests for being here tonight, looking forward to the work session. We're going to be talking about this MOU that has been discussed before, and I find it very disappointing as well. It's a matter in which I would say unilaterally agreed upon by two people, two individuals in Wycomico County, a decision was made which affects all of Wycomico County, and that is the executive in Eastern Shore Undercover. The council wasn't made aware of this. Sheriff Lewis was, for the most part, ignored, as was our state's attorney. And these, those are two very critical individuals in our community involved strictly with public safety. And the public in general was completely left out, never knew, never knew about it until they most likely saw it on Facebook. And to me, it leads one to ask, since when is this the true and responsible representation we expect to have in Wycomico County? When it is determined, for the most part, by fiat, what is in the best interest for the rest of us? The elected officials in this room, the elected officials at this table, and also the citizens of Wycomico County. I don't think we can just justify with the stroke of a pen that we can indiscriminately put the safety of our officers and citizens under the responsibility of a Facebook blogger. And I don't say that in a disparaging way, I just have to ask you, what is the sense of this? At this organization's discretion, the responsibility for the dissemination of sensitive information is taken away from those elected, and I'm talking about the sheriff and his people. But the responsibility is taken away from those individuals who are already in place to best protect the county's interests. It's a concern of mine, and I honestly, sincerely believe it is not good for Wycomico County. So, I'm very anxious, I'm very pleased to have the sheriff here tonight, with all due respect, and I'm very anxious to see how the work session moves forward. So, again, thank you very much.